Hello, Mayor? 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 Mayor Woods? Mayor Woods? Yeah, I'm trying to get Mayor Woods's attention.
Mayor Woods? Councilmember Hodge is trying to get your attention.
Oh, that wouldn't be the first time, Councilmember Hodge.
Yes, Mayor Woods, can we do a moment of silence?
Hold on, hold on.
Hold on, Councilmember, I can't hear you, hold on, okay?
Eliana. Can we get the volume turned up?
So, you know, it's, it's.
Give me just a minute. I'm trying to get the volume turned up. You speak one more time?
Can we give you a moment of silence? Or Justice O'Connor?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think when we start in three minutes, Councilmember, we can absolutely do that to get it on the record.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, she sent me a text, yeah, thank you so much. And, um, Charlotte, Representative Solomon's not on, is she?
Not yet.
Okay.
She did indicate she was joining.
Okay, yeah, she got our texting yesterday, okay, sounds good.
Man, he's signing a ring.
Weathering.
Yes.
I gotta do, you might have bought that too. Eli, I know you will. Scary. Jason, dear, everything good, or? Okay? All right, I keep everything on time. All right, good morning, everyone, welcome to the Tempe City Council and Arizona State Legislators' Joint Meeting this morning here at the ASU Fulton Center. Thank you so much, Arizona State University, for hosting us here in this beautiful conference room. Just want to, before we get started, we were talking right before we began, Councilmember Hodge was talking about, we just heard of the passing of Justice Sandra Day O'Connor, and Councilmember Hodge was talking, but she would like to do a moment of silence in honor of Justice Sandra Day O'Connor before we get started with today's official business. So we can just do a quick moment of silence. Thank you so much, everyone, really appreciate it. All right, we're gonna do, get to item number two here, welcome introductions. First of all, I want to thank each and every one of you for attending this morning. We're fortunate, obviously, to be able to have options to get together both in person as well as virtually, to be able to connect prior to this year's legislative session. We all know that session starts during the second week of January, so this meeting with our state legislators, state legislators, is critically important to make sure we're discussing shared priorities and we're hearing from one another before session begins. We also know that the work of being an elected official is very challenging, but we know that this work is well worth the effort in order to represent all of our residents and constituents. We do, Senator Epstein, I know you're here, actually, listen, before we even get started, let's just do the quick round of introductions so that we have folks here in the room and folks online. Let me start here to my left with our Senate Minority Leader.
Great, thanks, I am Mitzi Epstein, I am Senate Minority Leader and Senator for District 12, Awutuki Chandler in Tempe.
Thank you so much. Mayor Corey Wood, City of Tempe.
Councilmember Arlene Chin, City of Tempe.
Councilmember Doreen Garland, City of Tempe.
Let me also then take the elected officials online, then I'm gonna kind of go around the room just so people online know who's in the room. Let me start first with Councilmember Hodge.
Hi, Councilmember Hodge, City of Tempe.
And thank you so much, Representative Travers?
Hi, everyone, Representative Travers, LD 12, South Tempe, Wes Chandler, O G P.
Sounds good, and is Representative Solomon on yet? I don't believe so. Let's just do a quick round around the room here, just to make sure, once again, that for the folks who are online, they know who's here. Let me go ahead and start with our city manager.
Good morning, everyone, Roseanne Shafste, City Manager.
Good morning, everyone, Tom Mencin, Chief Deputy City Manager.
Tim Burris, Department of Community Health and Human Services Director.
Keith Burke, Deputy City Manager.
And let me go to the back wall here as well.
Kristen Donald, or Erwin, that's my maiden name. ASU.
Then go as ASU.
Ariana, City of Tempe.
Roxanne Doris, City of Tempe.
Jason Wolf, City of Tempe.
Sorry, I'm gonna go to you, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, Sonia Blaine, Tempe, City Attorney.
Good morning, Widel Holmes, City of Tempe, Director of Strategic Management and Innovation.
David Lucere, Tempe resident, candidate for city council and veterans advocate.
Thank you.
Shawna Warner, City of Tempe, Interim Government Relations Director.
Tapan Dalazada, City of Tempe.
Dorit Durastia, City of Tempe, City Clerk.
Anya Chavez, City of Tempe, Chief of Staff.
And Ty, let me go to the back wall.
Ty Lee, City of Tempe.
Jared Moore, City of Tempe.
Eliana Towns, City of Tempe.
Sounds good, and I know we've got several other folks on the phone, but I'll make sure, just if we can keep the meeting moving, we'll get back to the agenda. But you can see, obviously, the faces up there, I know Kristin and I were talking about the Brady Bunch earlier, so make sure we can actually use that reference in this room. So I just wanted to say, once again, to our state legislators, I know to, you know, Senator Epstein, you know, we obviously very much value the partnership we have with you here in the City of Tempe and appreciate the work you do, not just simply during the legislative session, but also outside of legislative session as well. We also want to make sure that, and we do know this, you, Representative Travers, and all the folks who represent the City of Tempe, we know that you very much acknowledge the important work that we do as local elected officials here at the City of Tempe, and we appreciate the responsiveness that you show to all of us, as well as each and every one of our residents. So we want to make sure we can continue to collaborate with you on ideas of care and interest. So we really want to make sure that we always have these touch-based conversations before the session starts, because we know our lives are crazy, and we know, starting that second week of January, things get very crazy down to the state Capitol for quite a few months. So we really value your time, and you making the time to be here with us this morning. So we've got a few things we're gonna be talking about today. The sober living fraud crisis, I know that Councilmember Garland's worked very hard on this issue. Of course, having a conversation about the impact of the elimination of residential rental tax, which I know will start at the beginning of 2025, but still, that is a major hit to the general fund budget of the City of Tempe's, we'll get more into that. And then we want to make sure that we have a chance to open it up to each and every one of this room to talk about what priorities might be for this upcoming legislative session. So with that said, I will now turn it over to Tim Burris here, who's our Community Health and Human Services Director, who's gonna be providing the presentation on sober living fraud for us.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, members of council and our esteemed state leaders, both in the room and online. Tim Burris, Director of Community Health and Human Services. I just wanted to touch on an issue today about the crisis we're having around the explosion of fraudulent sober living homes. And I'll try to lean on that word fraudulent as much as possible, because we do have good actors who are great partners, who are delivering much-needed mental health and substance abuse treatment to individuals in our community. Next slide, please. The goal here is to give you a little bit of a primer without being exhaustive or remediative for folks already know the issue. But this is not something that, while it feels like it exploded overnight, happened overnight. As early as 2019, Senator Hattley, as well as other tribal leaders, began to identify an issue with amongst the tribal community of individuals being gone missing, quite frankly, and assumed kidnapped in some situations, and found were turned up several states over, and sober living homes being operated here as far away as New Mexico. We know that Access began looking into some irregular billing later that year. In 2020, our friends out in Goodyear began seeing explosion, they had over 70 homes being operated. They've been able to bring that down, remediate it to under 20 with local ordinances and things they have at their disposal. We definitely know that that is still significant for their community. I'm surprised even begin to see this out in 2022. What we know is, this really came to a head in May of this year, and we're thankful for the governor who launched, you know, a task force and statewide initiative, put Solari on the clock to help individuals stand up 211 Option 7, and I'll say 211 Option 7 several times again, because if you, your neighbors, or anyone you come across being impacted by this issue of being defrauded and not treated properly by a detox provider, calling 211 Option 7 is how to get that reported and how the individual can get the help that they actually need. We got briefed shortly after that in June, this is the scope and nature of the problem, and we can, at the direction of council, and thank you to the championship again of Councilwoman Garland, and being present at all of our meetings, not just from Task Force, but through her committee as well. And we launched our internal sober living crisis task force, we have met monthly, we have gone through a targeted event readiness forum, and all of our internal systems that touch this issue, and we're actually getting ready to make recommendations and finalize those here in the coming, coming month. Next slide. The scope of the problem really looks like this. What we know is over 400-plus vendors have been suspended and terminated. Those are ones that have been identified through Arizona Healthcare Cost Containment System. Over 168 unique providers have been reported through the 211 Option 7 line to access these disdated data points as of last Friday. Over 6,200 unique individual identified victims of this. 50% are not tribally affiliated, and I put that point up there to say this began as a targeted event against individuals in the tribal nations. The providers are astute, and they are able to switch their modes of operation very quickly. So they figured out that there's not a check anyone can identify and try to sign up for the Indian Health Plan option. There's not a lot of safeguards against identifying someone truly being a member of a tribal nation before that enrollment happens. So they have been pulling individuals off the streets, assigning them up under that plan, and fraudulently billing for services under that plan. So as much as half of the fraudulent billing won't even be to provide services to the individuals for which that plan was identified. We know that as much as $650 million in fraudulent billing happened last fiscal year. There was a startling statistics going out by Senator Hattley at her event back in June, and I just hang on that. Over the lifespan of this, it could be as high as $2 billion. And I think about the amount of good that can be done with that kind of money. What we do know is the Arizona's Attorney General and FBI are investigating, our local Tempe PD is active in that, and again, a public shout out to Commander Dane Hill and Kim McCoy in the police department, and they've done partnering on those investigations. Next slide. That's the scope, the size of the problem looks a little different, and the shape of the problem looks a little bit different, depending which jurisdiction you're in. There's two primary models of operation here. You have a licensed outpatient treatment clinic that has partnered up with a housing provider. Those housing providers, and a lot of communities are occupying many, many, many residential housing units. In some situations, in Mesa, I believe, one provider came in and took 20 to 40 units out of one subdivision. It looks a little different for more urban, space-contained city like City of Tempe. What we've seen is individuals partner with individuals running hotels and motels. We have the co-location of dozens of individuals, of families upwards of as many as 200 at one facility, who are being housed and getting paid via kickbacks from that outpatient treatment center provider. And I guess what's really important to understand is, the actual housing piece is not paid for by Access. It is overbilling by the treatment provider, and then those under the table are kickback payments to the housing provider. And that makes it a little hard for us to investigate and track down as well. Treatment and housing are typically co-located where they are, we do have some enforcement authorities who are code, because you're not allowed to kind of operate in a residential or sober living housing, you're not able to provide medical treatment. And that's our code enforcement team has, has been intervening on some of those, but that's a fewer and far in between situation. What we do know is these housing providers also limit, restrict the movements of their clients, often busing them to and from the treatment facilities, and that's the only transportation they'll provide them. And imagine if you are from a tribal nation of north, as far away as New Mexico, you're in a city you don't know. You don't know the address, you don't know the city, and the only time you get to leave is when someone tells you you can leave. That's the level of restrictive movement we've seen for some of those individuals. We've also seen other more dubious methods, such as giving alcohol and drugs to individuals to help restrict their movement in a way that plays on their addiction instead of treating it. So both of those things are a part and parcel of this. Our task force, we convene, we look to communication, coordinate response internally, identifying our gaps and solutions, and again, moving on to making recommendations. Next, next slide. I touched it a little bit on this, we've convened monthly, we focused in, we brought in our community partners, thank you to Councilwoman Bette Hodge, who paved the way and helped me make sure that we had all the Title I coordinators from our Tempe School District partners at the table, listening to them, they're hearing directly from affected families. Our communications team, we talked about reporting and tracking and enforcement. And again, we had what we call a targeted event readiness forum, which really is bringing everybody that's able to touch this issue in the City of Tempe from a terminal standpoint, learning what they can do, what they can't do, where do they gap, how we overcome those things. And a thank you to emergency management for running that process. It was a new approach of what we thought, this is a crisis much like a natural disaster, let's treat it with that level of investment. Next slide. So out of that comes recommendations. Now, we'll make recommendations to our council where we have scope and capacity, about because the nature of this meeting is just not an opportunity to talk to our state officials, we wanted to echo some of the recommendations that we've seen formulated from our partners at Arizona Department of Health Services, who have been at multiple meetings side by side, multiple community forums on this issue. I mean, we know that there are some key identified things and needs that would help from the state level. One is eliminate loopholes. Right now, if a provider is under investigation, they can sell their company, do a change of ownership form to one of their partners, and enforcement activity does not follow them on record. This new partner who was sitting next to them the whole time gets to start fresh. So closing some of those loopholes. Inspection loopholes, we know that if someone, first of all, that some of these sober living homes were not being inspected until month 11 of their 12-month cycle, so they had a full 11 months of ability to defraud and harm clients. We know that the Department of Health Services has started doing a first 30 days of operational inspection, so we're thankful for that. We also know that these folks are astute in doing the initial dog and pony. If they pass initial inspection, they're not, they don't have to be re-inspected for 24 months. So closing that timeframe of re-inspection would certainly be helpful. Fees, the state legislate, the state statute limits fees to $500 per incident. We know just for minimal bed cost, you can bill $261 a day per, you know, PM PM rate, per member, per day. We know that some of these providers are billing over $1,000-plus dollars a day per client or fraudulent services. So $500 fine does not dissuade them. One of the recommendations also is those fines and fees can just roll from year to year, it does not impact licensing. So the suggestion that those fees have to be paid before a license can be reissued certainly would help at least recapture some of that damage. Monitoring for non-compliance, there, I said, there are strong ethical providers, our community provide a great service to our clients who need it. So we're not so sure that all this extra enforcement should fall on their backs. If there's a way to put a lien for enforcement activity onto the fraudulent provider, that would certainly help, help keep the costs down for our good partners. As well as knowing who the providers in your community are. You can go to Arizona Care Check and find out where the behavioral health homes are, as well as licensed outpatient treatment centers, sober living homes. Those affirmations not shared, only law enforcement and zoning officials can get that information. So from a health and human services standpoint, when we're dealing with a client who's been impacted, it takes a bit of time and a workaround for us to be able to find out even who this individual's living with. And so certainly, we'd like that to be publicly shared as well, which requires legislative change. And of course, I would not be a department head if I didn't stand before you all, talk about money and people. What we know is, our partners at Arizona Department of Health Services are still working off paper for a lot of these processes, which requires double entry into multiple systems, Arizona Care Check, if the information there, that requires sometimes triple entry, which gives you opportunity for human error along the way as well. So just bringing them into a more modern electronics format to help create some efficiencies for them as well, and use the limited staff they had. And the people part of that is, we know in talking to our partners, as this need has exploded, their staffing model's flat over the last six to seven years. So enforcement does require people, and we recognize that, but we want to stand with them since they stood with us in this process and say that we believe that that money invested in systems and people for oversight enforcement, quality assurance, would be money well invested on behalf of our most fragile and vulnerable citizens in the City of Tempe, and those are the people who have mental health and substance abuse issues, that are working desperately to house, but we need safe, ethical places in order to be able to house them and then have those supportive services. So that certainly wraps my small presentation. If you have any questions or things that I can answer, I'd be willing to.
Thank you, Tim, great presentation. Anyone, and let me see if I can also then skip back to the screen to make sure that there are no hands going up online as well. But first of all, I'll go, any questions in the room, Senator Epstein, yes, please.
So does the city have any local ways to either enforce or investigate or otherwise improve the situation from a local standpoint?
You want me to take that, or do you want me to?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So there are, there are local tools that can be used, such as City of Surprise has effectively used a general business license. That is not a tool we get to this in City of Tempe. So there are local things. If there is direct harm or violence that's being done to these clients, of certain law enforcement, Tempe PD has been phenomenal. It's our own internal security force, actually, that brought a lot of this to our light. Just watching how people are being treated, they were coming in our library system to identify some of these issues, so I guess shout to them. So the really awareness, but from an enforcement standpoint, we don't have a licensing or enforcement authority around these types of entities. So we're a little bit limited in what we can do, only if they break code or zoning regulations are we able to, at this point, stand in.
Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Senator Epstein, for that great question. That's been one of the challenges when we started this internal working group, is recognizing that relationships are imperative, because legally, we don't have the jurisdiction to do things as we wish. And I was wondering if Councilmember Garland can talk about some of the partnerships she's helped create with the tribal community and the state agencies from the enforcement side, that shot, that one.
Yeah, so at the very beginning of this, I will, I will say, give a shout out again to our security services. If you see something, say something, they did, they saw something that was unusual, they contacted another one of our security guards that works at City Hall, who was a police officer at the Navajo Nation. And through them, kind of, we were able to figure out that we were actually having sober living issues in the City of Tempe. And I think our outreach then was with the Navajo Nation, it was with the Bureau of Indian Affairs, that we were able to get some more information about what's happening and how it's working in Tempe. Also, you know, reaching out to the tribal communities around us. I mean, it's really important for us to get some more information. We did go to, help set up a big conference, it was gonna actually be at the, in a small conference room, but when people started hearing about Senator Hattley coming in and talking about perspective from the Navajo Nation perspective and what the nations are doing, it ended up being a really huge meeting, and we ended up having to move to the Capitol. What's great about what she's gonna be doing is this upcoming legislative session, she's gonna be bringing up some items that will be able to close some of those loops, hopefully, and bring more awareness to the population about what's happening with these sober living facilities. And I think what's really important for us to be able to share with our community across the state is if you see something, say something. Because some of the issues that we have, we can't, they're happening in neighborhoods, they're taking homes, renting homes, and keeping people inside those homes. And again, we can't enter private properties unless there's an issue there. So we are looking at what can we can do to make some changes here in the City of Tempe. Senator Hattley is looking at what she can do for the state. It's a horrible situation, and it's, it has really affected a lot of tribal communities, but it's not just the tribal communities that are being affected.
If I may, just follow up to that, the, if you see something, if you say something, is, apparently, we heard a report from Access just this week, and that is a lot of how much of this has been reported, the fraudsters have reported because somebody reported them. There seems to be a little bit of a bias towards reporting homes that have, of course, no color clientele. So we need all of our folks who are helping to enforce this to be abundantly aware of the reports are not balanced. And that, as you've mentioned, there's a lot of really good operators out there that are getting caught in the net of turn off the money, which is what Access had to do, and we want to be just aware of what's going on, as I'm sure Tempe is very aware, probably more so than many others, so.
Question, actually, Madam City Attorney, are we allowed to take questions from members of the public, or it just have to be between us? I wanted to ask you before.
Okay, you absolutely can, but the problem will be in how we, how we respond, we may not be able to respond. So we can certainly take the comments in.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I missed Lucere in his hand, but I wanted to ask you before I turn to him, so.
Thank you.
So, yes. And then, oh, and then, actually, let me go to Councilmember Hodge first, then I will come back, so.
So I just want to add that it's a big avenue that people are missing, is the school districts, because that's how I got involved, is because they contacted me directly from the school district, because the kids were coming to school and they were eating out of the garbage and taking food, and they were getting their lunch money taken away, and they were, they were stacking, trying to stack food in their backpacks and stuff. So another, when we talk to our communities, we also need to also make sure we involve the education system in it, because kids have, they have the best story to tell, and they're very honest when they tell their stories. So just, just for us to remember that we need to connect with the school districts also.
Sounds good, thank you, Councilwoman, still Lucere, a question.
Are there ordinances that, you know, can be enacted to help resolve some of these problems?
Is that okay to be answered, Madam City Attorney?
Well, we absolutely can, I mean, we can't provide any legal advice here, but we can certainly can talk about items that are under consideration.
Okay, sounds good. Who'd like to take that? Tim, or Madam City Manager, or anyone?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Woods. We know, again, I mentioned that the, the scalpel that City of Surprise used around a general business license, let them quickly identify homes that were operating a commercial business out of a residential facility, and then be able to say, you don't have a business license, you're exceeding your license, and use that tool to be able to certainly wrangle their problem down to one that's much more manageable. So we've heard about that tool. Right now, our zoning regs really are focused in on making sure that reputable providers are licensed correctly, so they're not focused on catching the outlying bad actor. So you make sure that if you are providing services at a facility that's done in certain ways, that you need a sanatorium or hospital type of licensure. So perhaps modernization on some of those classifications that have been around for a while are things that we've seen in other jurisdictions. I'll just leave it there to reflect on what we've seen work in other jurisdictions.
Thank you. Thank you for the question as well. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Any further comments or questions on the side?
Yes, Councilwoman Garland. I'm sure the City of Surprise is not watching, but I just want to say that it was very, very helpful with this, working with the City of Surprise and Tiffany Cope specifically, who I was able to get to come to our meeting to talk to us. She's, and I was at a elementary meeting yesterday and was sitting next to another council member from a different city and we were talking about sober living and they're going to be talking to Tiffany Cope, it's going to be going out there too. But they, being able to share their information and not recreating wheel on some of the things that we're doing is, has allowed us to jumpstart and move farther ahead than we would have been if we would have started where they were. So we just really want to say thank you so much to the City of Surprise.
Thank you. Anyone else? Further comments on the side? All right, seeing none. Tim, thank you for the presentation. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, also, I did, I have my hand up. I just want to ask one quick question.
Oh, sorry, we've gone, yes, please.
Um, Tim, I don't know if this, I don't know if I can remember this, but have we decided to do like to our neighborhoods, maybe have like a tour, a listening tour, so they know like our like, like our HOAs and our neighborhood presidents' information and look, to look for, to look at and check out and maybe pass that along to all the neighbors in that direction? I'm not sure if I had asked that question before or not.
To Councilwoman Hodge, no ma'am, but that is a good suggestion and we will definitely take that to the committee that meets next week and put that in the pipeline.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Garland.
I, just to say that I also invited the, we serve the real estate, East Valley Real Estate Agencies to come to our meeting so that they are aware of what's happening, so they can talk to the real estate agents. So it's, there are other eyes and boots on the ground in there. And so anything we can do, Councilmember Hodge, that's exactly right, to be able to pull in more people is great.
So, sounds good. All right, any other questions on item number three? All right, seeing none, we will move on then to item four A, which is the impact of rental tax elimination on our city budget. I will start with our Chief Deputy City Manager and CFO, Tom Dunson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor, councilmembers, esteemed state legislators. I'll keep this pretty brief. One of our five priorities at the City of Tempe is maintaining financial stability. It's what is able to drive our programs, our police, our fire, some of the things that Mr. Birch was talking about. So it's very important to us that we are able to maintain our stability, so we're able to deliver these services and also maintain our AAA rating, which has other important consequences. As you know, one of our priorities is to basically maintain our revenue sources. It's to keep anything from happening for our taxable activities. And this is a perfect example of that, the elimination of the residential rental. And so again, we will watch it closely. This is a result of Senate Bill 1131 that was actually signed into law this past August, so it's just a few months old. And what we are doing, but the nature of the problem is what we are doing preliminarily to address this issue. A couple of takeaways on this slide is that we estimate that we will be losing about nine percent of our sales tax. That sales tax covers three funds. It covers our general fund, which is our main operating fund, transit and arts and culture. The scope of the problem, as the mayor talked about, it begins this, or in January 2025 is really the effective date of this. So basically, the impact is about half of this fiscal year we're going to be budgeting in this upcoming spring with the full impact being felt in fiscal '26. Full impact at this point is about 21 million. We'll continue to look at that. A lot of that is contingent on how our growth in Tempe happens. And as you know, our growth in Tempe, we do a lot of multifamily, there's a lot of residential rental activity in here. So that is revenue that we would lose. So this is a recurring issue. This is not a one-time problem, this is a recurring loss of revenue beginning in fiscal '25 and forward. Next slide. So here, just as a, is a real quick look at our revenues in each of the funds that is impacted. And you can see that general fund, transit fund, arts and culture, the same three funds on the prior slides. And I can tell you, the most significant impacts are felt by two of the three, the general fund and the transit fund. The general fund, we will have to address the issue immediately. We try to maintain our fund balance, but we don't want to sit on a significant fund balance. So that 13 million, 14 million in our general fund is an impact. And our transit fund, I'll just, I'll just speak a minute to that. It is a, there's a little bit more fund balance in our transit fund, but it's a bigger percentage of our revenues. So I've been talking to our engineering and transportation staff, we'll be bringing forward recommendations to the council on how we will adjust our spending within that fund. But it is a significant impact to our transit fund. Arts and culture, luckily, it's a relatively evolving service level. So we're able to, to kind of adapt our services early. In other words, we're not a, we can, we can hedge against adding more services than we can afford. So it's a little bit more manageable in our arts and culture fund. But again, the two biggest funds, general fund, transit funds, are the ones that are impacted. And, and I will go as far as saying it'll be a central theme in this upcoming budget process on how we're going to deal with this. Next slide. So we presented this slide in our November long-range forecast at the November 2nd work-study session. And this basically is analysis of our savings, our general fund fund balance. The slide on the left is what our fund balance would look like at this legislation not passed. In short, we would be fine, we would be able to adapt our service levels to our revenue sources and still maintain our fund balance. The, the box on the right is really where we're at today. If we do nothing, what this slide says is we will spend through our policy fund balance in two years. So what that tells us is we need to address this issue immediately and decisively, and it's going to be a recurring impact to our expenditures.
Take questions?
Yes, I would love to.
Great, thanks. So in the state, we have a bunch of stabilization fund. Do you have such a fund separate in the state or is your balance basically your stabilization fund in the city?
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor Council, Senator Epstein, this really is our stabilization. Our stabilization is our unassigned fund balance. That is our stabilization. And that's the fund we can go to if we want to make immediate adjustments. If we want to make immediate adjustments, but again, we can only spend that money once. And so a recurring problem with a one-time balance, something has to give on the expenditure side. And, and for everybody in this room, I do want to do a special thanks to Senator Epstein. Very dialed in on this issue, actually met with staff and, and a sincere appreciation and thank you from myself. Next slide. So what can we do? Talked with Senator Epstein just a little bit before this meeting. And at this point, we are developing strategies in the city manager's office. One nice thing, and really a silver lining with this issue, is I was directed by our city manager to get this message out early. I can tell you, our council is dialed in on this issue and, and understands the depth of this issue. So we're working on what can we do to ensure we adjust our expenditures, adjust our spending down by that, by that, at least in the general fund, 14, $15 million a year. In November, at the, at the forecast, when we present the work-study session, we presented this as a structural deficit of about 15 million. So structural deficit, we'll have to look at the expenditure side, so. Freeze or reduce them. Or we can prioritize or eliminate services. It's really pretty simple. The, the answer at this point is on the expenditure side of the ledger. And so we'll look at that, we'll develop a plan, we'll get in front of council in this upcoming budget cycle to determine how we are going to adjust. And one of the things that we have to keep in mind is the services. Does this impact our services? Absolutely impacts our services. We are not able to adjust to increasing demands. We had a great presentation by Tim Birch. We absolutely have a demand for services, so this really competes against that. But we have to address this issue and we will. And with that, I, next slide, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. And let's go ahead and switch back to the screen so I can see if anyone's asking questions online. But just, Tom wanted to say thank you for the presentation, but I appreciate the city manager, you know, you and up and Rosa, the ability to talk about this early on, because I think that's one of the concerns, that many times we hear this in public of like, well, wait a minute, like why, you know, why did you lose the residential rental tax? There's sometimes this confusion about these things. And many times when I'm following things online and some of the concerns that our residents raise, there's a lot of concern about, hey, can we add this or we can redo more of this? You know, we had a very tragic accident last week where a car got ripped in half. And one of the things I saw from a sort of chatter standpoint online was a lot of residents saying, well, hey, how do we get more police officers out there doing traffic safety and enforcing? I don't see enough people writing tickets and things of that nature. We are exploring ways to talk about doing that. And I know, Madam City Manager, you talked last night about implementing, you know, a traffic safety task force and the meetings that are happening internally to try to get some of those things more into control when it comes to street racing and things of that nature. But these are the things that do become a challenge when you lose $15 million in the beginning of 2025, when people want you to add more services. More services equates to more people doing more work. And so I think that part of this is trying to do the best that we can to freeze things, if at all possible, to ensure that our residents aren't seeing massive service reductions to the services that they frankly have come to expect and we obviously all feel deserved. But at the same time, letting them understand that this is not something that the city of Tempe brought on itself. And if we're talking about freezing things or even potentially at some point doing some productions, once again, this is something that happened to us. It's not something that was through any kind of bad fiscal management that we were practicing here in the city of Tempe. So I appreciate the fact that we're telling residents about this, but it's also, I think partially, it is sort of an educational effort, but I'm glad we are proactively engaging in. Councilwoman Birkin?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I always appreciate Mr. Dunson saying your calm, level-headed approach to any situation and with the city manager, how you make things work and how you call all of us. And you are proactive in educating us, which then helps us to educate our residents and other stakeholders. But I turn to Senator Epstein and I absolutely appreciate your support in helping staff and educate. However, if I may, I cannot underscore enough why this hurts us as a community. And I need for you to continue to partner with us to amplify that voice because it hurts current services, it hurts current issues, as Mr. Birch shared. That's only one of the many issues, as you are fully aware, that we're trying to combat in our communities. And it also impacts any of our emerging issues and challenges. You know, in every conversation we have about, okay, what can we do? You know what? We are in a deficit when it comes to that. And I, I implored you to continue working with us to avoid situations or to rectify this type of situation.
And I want to say very quickly too, and thank you, I, I wanted to say too, I know that, you know, this was, this came about, and I said on the Mayor Copa Association of Government Transportation Policy Committee, and I know one of the challenges in this situation, just from a context standpoint, was there was a, this was part of a deal in terms of getting Proposition 400E across the finish line, which was critically important. You know, it's something that is not just simply from my perspective, our transportation future, but it was also our economic development future as a region. And so, you know, I know that there were a lot of, there was a lot of negotiation that had to take place to get to this point. And frankly, my concern, just speaking very candidly, is that our, our previous governor had something on the agenda where the, there was the support of all the mayors, Republicans and Democrats, was there to get Prop 400E, a clean bill across the finish line, and it was vetoed without any notice whatsoever, without any explanation to the mayors or to any of the cities. And so, you know, we ended up, when Governor Hobbs came in, having to work on this. And there unfortunately then began to be sort of a harder line that was played in terms of some of the negotiations. So we, we understand why this took place and understand why Prop 400E really is critical. But I agree with Councilmember Chin, you know, whatever we can do to ensure that, you know, we don't, that future cuts like this don't take, don't take place is obviously critically important. We appreciate your partnership and you working with our city staff to, you know, just do whatever we can to continue to work together on this item. Councilwoman Garland?
I'm just going to say along the lines of what my colleagues were just saying is the understanding or hearing about the possibility of the removing of the food tax also, which would be another $8 million hit on our general fund. So just again, just what we can do to partner together or support each other to really keep that from happening or, or what we could do, I mean, it's just another hit that that would probably I heard 2026 is when that would come about, I think, so just want to mention.
Yes, please, absolutely.
So, thank you for that. What I need is to hear some specifics, and I know it's painful to give specific examples of things that would be cut because you don't want to cut any of them. But I have taken to when people were talking about the residential rental tax and removing it. And they'd say, but you know, it's so aggressive to have to test people who are renting as though there is no such thing as luxury apartments that are rented. So it's, it was rhetoric on their part that I just began to counter with childcare. You know, if you want to cut rental tax, you're cutting childcare. It's one of the crucial, crucial services that cities provide. And if not childcare, fine, parks and libraries, well, that's another place that kids go after school. So it hits our families in our homes, in our every single day life, when you cut this revenue. Because unfortunately, I'm very fed up with my Republican colleagues who have been budgeting with their eyes closed and not looking at, they want to cut, they want taxes to be lower. Well, yes, we all want taxes to be lower, but we want basic services provided to families to help them grow. And some of these basic services are what help a young family grow into a very prosperous family that then contributes more so later on. That's our social contract with each other. And cities are the place where that social contract is carried out so very well. You're, you're right there delivering that childcare, providing that park, turning the lights on for the soccer practice for the youth team. That's what makes our quality of life so important. And we try to express that to my colleagues and I, when they say they're going to make cuts and they don't seem to see a connection or they just don't value these things. So my final word is yes, I will help you bring these out. And we all have to help families understand the things they use every day are being provided by a city. The city picked up your trash, the city moves the sewer, the water through the sewers, these invisible things. Your city is providing them. And when you cut revenue to your city, that's what you're cutting. So we will continue to do that and I, all our Tempe City Council members are really wonderful in outreach. I appreciate that. We have to keep that up so that people know. And eventually, maybe the word will get to my Republican colleagues. If they refuse to see it, perhaps they can hear it, that city services matter and that they are the things that families use and rely on every single day. So thank you for your work. We'll, we'll keep being creative and see what we come up with.
Absolutely. And look, just make sure I'm saying this too, you know, we know that you have been a champion for the city of Tempe and for all of our interests, and we appreciate the close partnership. And, you know, this was a very, very difficult situation that you were all put into that frankly, you should have never been in, in the first place. So we just appreciate your continued partnership and how much, you know, yourself and representative traverse have continued to always work with us. We always can get ahold of you and you've always been, you know, fighting for the city of Tempe and frankly, all of our nearly 200,000 residents down at the state capitol. So I wanted to say very personally, thank you for your efforts and for the continued work with us. work with us. Oh, Councilwoman Rahaj, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yes, I was just for Senator Epstein, when you have, when there's a chance for us to come down there and maybe speak, please let us know so we can be an advocate. I don't mind going to the capitol and speaking. I've done it lots of times on education. I don't mind doing it. I just want to be a great partner to you on that side, because I understand how hard it is when you have to convince other people. So if you do have any, any chances that we can go down there as, you know, as council members and, and, you know, kind of plead our story, just let us know. Thank you.
Will do. Just a series of questions.
My comment is not accusatory, but it's more analytical, I guess. And it seems to me that this is a huge legislative problem. And so the solutions largely have to come from the, from the legislature. And so, you know, are there any tactics or strategies that you might be able to address that would, you know, help bring those solutions to fruition?
I was thinking, one, just as, you know, I think to a point you made, Senator Epstein, and Councilwoman Rahaj just made, I think that whatever we can do from a partnership standpoint, you know, when it comes to, if there's the ability for us to go down to the state capitol times, if there's things where you need assistance and say, it would be helpful if council members or constituents were able to come raise their voices in support or against certain kinds of harmful legislation. So that, as you talked about, when there are, when you have colleagues who are not understanding the real human impact of what some of these cuts actually mean, that they actually do, that we can come down and talk about this many dollars equates to this specific program or forces us to not be able to hire this many police officers or firefighters or things of that nature, or doesn't allow for us to add additional human services for the unsheltered who need help on our streets. So I think that the ability for us to partner and maybe go down and kind of give very direct examples, as both you and Councilwoman Rahaj talked about, might be very helpful in swaying some of these folks who are looking at these things as just numbers, but as you talked about, not really understanding the human impact that these cuts actually have on real people. Yes, Councilwoman Rose.
Let's see, I'm not sure if you are aware of this, Senator Epstein, and there's a, on our website, you can sign up for the legislative tab that if you would like to be called as a resident, if there is an issue that's going up that affects the city of Tempe, you can go, you will be shot an email that says, okay, here's what it is. We'd love you to show up on this date and time. I'm not sure if you're aware of that. I haven't looked at it in a while, which, so I mean, maybe that's something we need to make sure that we put maybe in our, in our Tempe newsletter that goes out with our mail, just reminding people if you were interested in knowing what's going on in the legislature, would we have an opportunity to be able to speak up and have your voices heard? That might be something that we might want to do, that remind people of. Thank you.
Representative Travers, you would you hand it as well?
I do. And yeah, thank you for the opportunity to talk. And, you know, I listen to everybody and your, your comments and suggestions are wonderful, and I know are made in earnest, but we also have to have a moment of pragmatism here. And they don't care. My colleagues across the aisle understand the impact it was going to have, and they didn't care. So yes, it's helpful to come down, but this next legislative session, you will not change any minds, but it's good to have it on the record. It's good for people and our constituents to know that we are fighting for this. But, you know, please be also very realistic that, and I'm, I'm very happy to say it, they, they just don't care. They, they knew the implications and they knew the impact, and they did it anyway, and they used it for leverage and they played with it. And if that's how they want to be, that's fine. But it, you know, every, all this sort of rhetoric is well and good. And Mitzi and Patty and I, we all voted no, we all fought very hard, but at the end of the day, they, they honestly just don't care. So continue to engage, but also be very realistic about the impact that we're going to have right now.
Thank you. That's Councilwoman Richin.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that comment. And I always appreciate, and I think anyone who has worked with me knows, my favorite level-setting approach is I preface everything with, let me manage your expectations. So I appreciate that. And for that reason, I think we continue to state our case, right? It becomes more important than ever. I've learned in a leadership position where you have to make often tough decisions, and as the mayor pointed out, it was complex. And there were, there were, there was politics involved. And I get that. At the same time, as a leader, it is our responsibility to think about the unintended consequences of the decisions we make. And that's why we have to balance and take the input, all of the data that we can get to reach the best decision possible for as many people as possible. This was a classic example of a decision that had all of those challenging elements. And I don't believe the right decision was made. And whatever we can do to continue the, I don't want to call it a battle, but to continue to represent those voices of those that are impacted, because the unintended consequences, I understand the rhetoric that was used to validate this decision. But, and it was stated that it would help a certain segment of the population, a smaller segment of the population. What it ended up doing was affecting a broad swath of all of our communities. It impacts everyone. Parks, services, current challenges and emerging challenges and services. So that needs to be pointed out, and we need to keep saying it over and over where decisions are made.
I was going to say, and I really appreciate that point. I know one of the things I, I know that Senator Epstein and I know Representative Travers and I talked about, and I know we all, we share this perspective, is that one of the issues with the residential rental tax, and as you talk about rhetoric, is that the, right, the way it was being presented by, you know, by the other party was that it was, you know, why would the city of Tempe or any other of the 90 cities and towns in the state of Arizona tax rentals? You know, that's a regressive tax on people. But the challenge would have been that a lot of us would have been, you know, we all talked about this, would have been more in favor if we knew that repealing the residential rental tax actually passed on the savings to the person who's actually renting. But the fact of the matter is, that's not what it did. And so it, it doesn't end up, actually end up being a relief on renters in our community and giving them the ability to save to eventually enter in the homeownership. It just becomes more money that the person who's the landlord has the ability to get, put in their own pocket, because they can charge market rents and, and pocket more. And that was something that we all talked about during the time. So, so right, I agree. It's one of those things where unfortunately, there are people who are pushing rhetoric that, that while it sounds good at the 30,000-foot level, when you actually start digging into the details, as we all did during the session, we all recognized there were clearly, there were logical fallacies in there. So, Councilwoman Rahaj, and then Senator Epstein.
Also, thank you, Senator, excuse me, I'm so sorry. Thank you for your comments. And I just want to say, maybe as council members, we can mobilize together. If we, Senator Epstein, maybe you could give us a list of the, the senators that we have to, to, you know, to persuade more. Maybe we could go to the council members in that area, because they got to be voted in. And I think if we help educate communities on it, they will press on it. So we can maybe press on our colleagues to help us out a little bit more by, you know, pushing it. Save Our Schools did something similar to that, and it was, it wasn't successful, but it was successful on its own, because it made people, it highlight, you know, things that people weren't even aware of. And I was just thinking, maybe if you work with us to give us some, maybe some areas that we need to go to our colleagues and say, hey, this is affecting you, let's, you know, let's us have a conversation to see how we can help in that area, too. It's just, it's just a suggestion. And even on your side, too, Senator, Representative Travers, maybe you can give us on who we need to talk to on your, and that in the House, too, so we can have that conversation with some of our council members, our colleagues around the state, too.
Senator Epstein.
A great idea. Intergovernmental communication always helps. In this case, for city council members from one city to talk to another, it helps a great deal. I do also want to share that, you know, I'm recognizing cities will need every drop of revenue that is, deserve. And one of the places that I'm working on is there's a, because sales tax revenue in particular, as you know, sales tax comes into state, and then it's reapportioned back out to all the cities. And there's a piece of that that is impacted by this grants for infrastructure for advanced manufacturing that is right now the way the law was written, because the law was written only for Intel, wonderful advanced manufacturing company in our community. A sort of a grant for them to help build their infrastructure, the law is written only for them. Now we have at least three coming up on four, now we're adding Amcor, it's also advanced manufacturing, TSMC, LG, they're all advanced manufacturing. They all could apply for this really cool funding that Intel got, Intel and the city of Chandler got, that actually, if we do that, it will take more and more away from all the other cities' sales tax portion. So I'm working on that tax law. There are about three people in the state who understand it, and I feel like I'm, I'm one of them, and that's a weird thing, because I'm supposed to be a generalist, but nonetheless. We, it's, it's that kind of thing that we all need to be on the lookout for helping each other. This is very much city revenue, but I'm trying to fix that along the way with fixing it so that it is a law that applies to many companies, not just one. And that's something that happens with far too many of our state laws, our law is written for one company. And that's what happened with this one. We're going to fix it so that, again, you don't need to lose another million dollars inadvertently, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Tom, thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. All right, next up, item five here, state legislative priorities, state legislatures. I guess Senator Epstein, Representative Travers, I'll kind of, I'll turn to you. Things that we should go about going forward.
Okay, well, for the, our priorities for the caucus as a whole, I can speak to that. And I just told you a little bit about what are my priorities. Accountability is always a priority for me. And especially in, when it comes to making our taxes more equitable, because right now they're very progressive. But for the caucus, it is the Democratic Caucus. Housing, schools, and water remain three of our biggest priorities. And that's why we, I created the housing, schools, and water work groups, along with our House and Senate leadership teams. And we have people who've been meeting on every other week or so on those topics to come up with legislation that will help people to get more affordable homes, starter homes, and work in partnership with our cities on the solutions, so that we can see more things like casinos where they would work out great, and that missing middle where it can work out. We're also looking at a possibility that, the best way I can explain this is, if you've ever had a neighbor or anybody who says, you know, that vacant lot over at these corners, that should be housing. Why isn't that housing? Or that plaza that all the businesses have left except two, why isn't that housing? Well, there are really good reasons that our city folks really understand in terms of the sewer, the infrastructure of roads, and so many other things, isn't meant for housing. So we want to try to work with cities to come up with some incentives to help ease that, so that if you have a spot that could, wow, that'd be perfect for multi-housing. Let's help the cities do that. Let's see if the state can help make that happen in a way that is just basing tax law. But bottom line is, you know, that we want to help that feeling. Everybody thinks it's so obvious, that should be multi-housing, that's a great spot for it, let's do that. So we want to open that pathway. Schools, you know, an awful lot at schools gets fixed when you have enough money, because people need to be paid for their work. And that's the bottom line on schools. I was very interested to hear some of the city solutions are that if there was a traffic collision, then people will say, why don't we have more police to help with traffic to prevent problems and prevent street racing that is dangerous and so on. The same thing is true for bullying in schools. If we just have more teachers in the hallways, if we have enough teachers that we have teachers we could spare to be in the hallways during passing time, bullying is reduced. So there's so many things that we could help in our schools if we just fund them correctly. And right now, we're facing a $300 million cut, because last year, we plugged the budget with one-time money, that money isn't there in addition to our $450 million deficit overall. So the state has some budget work to do. Once again, as last year, making sure our K-12 schools are funded at least to stay even with inflation, because we should be able to buy the same number of pencils this year as last year, is what I will be speaking up for. And it's kind of a shame that that's what I am fighting tooth and nail, just to keep us at that level of funding. And then water, the governor has a water task force in Arizona, has a long tradition of governors helping convene the many, many people who should help us come up with our water solutions. One of the things that's coming out of there is you're probably aware that Tempe is in an AMA, an active management area, meaning that when you build a home in Tempe, you're required to assure 100 years of water. Immediately, the city of Tempe has you covered, so you're good. But if you were outside of a city, then you would still, as the builder, have to provide 100 years assured supply of water, unless you build that house to be rented. And then you can just let it run out of water in two years. It doesn't matter. So that is a silly loophole in the law, and we want to address that, because, you know, renters deserve water, too, in addition to homeowners deserving more. And, but the serious thing about it, I choke about renters deserving more, but the serious thing is, if we continue to allow developers to build land, build on land and expand, I'd call it housing, and because it's rented, there's no water supply, eventually, that is no longer going to be available for renting. If there's no water there, you can't, you can't live there. So it's not the solution. The solution is to make sure we have water and housing together and that we're managing them. So that's water. We are also going to make sure that we have a complete agenda with gun violence prevention, where we'd like to close loopholes on purchasing weapons, firearms specifically, and domestic violence. We want to make sure that a domestic violence abuser has to do something with their guns other than keep them. Abortion access, we believe that the abortion access initiative is going in the right direction. We're going to support that. And then equal rights and workforce. I started the day of talking about childcare, and I'm going to end the day talking about childcare. We really can and should do a much better job of helping our young families to support childcare, both, is it available? Is it, where is it? We have a cliff coming up because of the pandemic funding that was there for childcare specifically is going away. And we're, I'm quite concerned that we could lose a whole lot of childcare providers. So never mind being able to afford it, we just don't have the providers for it. So we, again, need to have our eyes open to what's coming up and to listen to our families about what they need. And childcare is a workforce problem to help people get a job, keep a job, and grow into a career. Busy, busy times ahead.
Sounds good. Thank you. Let me go, Representative Travers, you think you'd like to add a phone?
Yes, and yes, but yeah, but no, but yes, but no. And apologies for not being on camera. It's been a, it's been a rough, it was a rough night with my girls and a rough morning. And if you see it, you can't unsee it, so you'll just have to take my. So I'm starting very early conversations with the prison that's closing to see if we can do something in terms of adaptive reuse to try to, to try to help establish some sort of support services for our homeless community. There's a project in Colorado that I talked about at the Veterans Caucus called Fort Lyon. There's another one up in northern Arizona called Fort Whipple, that kind of addresses the homelessness with integrated support services. And I had already spoken to sort of Department of Housing about this concept of adaptive reuse. There's another project in Colorado that is also taking an old prison and is adaptive reuse into such a facility that I just mentioned. Those are incredibly preliminary conversations, but they've been sort of out there in the ether before, so we'll see kind of where we get with that. Again, to reiterate with Mitzi, as a member of the Governor's Water Policy Council, we'll be introducing legislation that closes the Wildcat Development loophole and the Build to Rent loophole, as well as substantial groundwater, rural groundwater. rural groundwater issues that need to be addressed. Of course, with Gail Griffin in the, in the hot seat as committee member, they're not going to go anywhere, but we're looking at options on what we can do through executive action until such time we are able to pass substantive water protections throughout the state. I'm running a duty to report which removes the clergy exemption from mandatory reporting of any abuse of, any sexual abuse of a minor. I ran it last year, I ran it, I'm running it again this year. It's gaining some traction and we're trying to, to work the bill to see how far we can take it. Chris Mays approached me, I don't know how much of you looked at the, the news recently, a couple of weeks ago, she announced that she was running a red flag law, which she's asked me to go ahead and run, and we're working on that now. And what it does is, it's very narrow and very niche. And what it does is it expands an already existing order of protection to include K through 12 and universities. And there'll be more on that later, once the language gets, gets finalized and we go ahead and, and put it out. I'm running my franchise bill again, which was supported by the Tempe Chamber. Again, I don't think it will get anywhere because the International Franchise Association has spent a lot of time and a lot of money bringing in people from Washington DC to kill the bill. And they've engaged one of our representatives from LD4 to be their shill. And so that's, it's not for lack of trying, but we'll get in. It protects small business owners from predatory private equity funds that purchase franchises and then put undue burdens and change of contracts on small business owners. And I'll, I'll run some more, some other smaller water bills, watershed protections. But again, won't get heard, but we'll, we'll keep fighting a good fight. So that's kind of what's on the cards for me right now, as well as, you know, trying to support our democratic priorities that Senator Mitzi Epstein just noted.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Councilmembers, any comments or questions for Senator Epstein or Representative Travers? Thank you. Appreciate it. That brings us to item number six, legislative partnerships. I know we've got a list here of our 2024 state legislative principles. Obviously, we're not going to go by, go through all of these one by one, but just wanted to see if the council members have any comments or questions or anything that they'd like to emphasize on this list or? Skip back to, okay, just make sure I can see the, the hands on the screen as well. Thank you. I, I don't have anything directly. I mean, this kind of really clearly outlines from, you know, my perspective, things that I'd, I'd like done, and I know we all come down as a council and agree upon what our principles are going to look like for the upcoming year. So I've nothing further to add on this, but.
Can we give this to us?
Let's see.
Give this to us.
All right, well, hearing nothing else, is there, are there any final comments before we, questions, comments before we adjourn for the day? Hearing on, let's get one of the legislators for all this for your partnership and working hand in hand with the city of Tempe. We really appreciate it and thank you each and every one of you for being here as well. And thank you to the public for watching at home. We are adjourned at 9:39 AM. Thank you so much, everyone.